Boys like to be acting appropriately and letting them know we care about their time and appreciate their coming and want to be hospitable. So with that consideration, if we would all rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we are recording, Karen? Okay. For the purposes of the recording, I'm going to take attendance. So I'll go around and you can just say here, Alice Joslow.
Here.
Shanti Speller.
Here.
Amanda Curley.
Here.
Cecilia Quintero.
Here.
Althea Goodson, who's on mute. But she's here.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Althea.
Hi, Althea.
Hi, Althea.
And Matthew Weiss. And we're waiting for Lucinda. And this is a very exciting time. Since we last met, we've had January 6th occurrence in the Capitol of our nation. We've had an inauguration. And here we are in January again. And I am looking forward to 2021.
Yes.
You're here.
Yes. Happy New Year.
It's good to see you all back. And Amanda, it's good to have you back. And Cecilia, I'm glad you're feeling better and can make it tonight.
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen Amanda. I'm so sorry about your father, but really.
Thank you.
You know, so sorry, sympathies.
And joining us tonight.
Did you have, you were sick?
Say it again.
You said, Matt, you said Cecilia was sick?
Well, I had surgery last month.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So I missed the meeting.
I forgot that, right? Hope you're all good. You're good then.
I'm good, thank you.
So joining us tonight are a few guests. We have from WLS, our trustee representative, John Marshall. We have from the Friends, the president of the Friends of the Ossling Library, Dennis Neuberger. And joining us from Insights for You, Michael Holmes. And we will start the meeting off, if you're ready, Al Costa of Bobisarian Costa.
Pass the seat belts, everybody.
There you go. That's the spirit. Okay, so you should have two documents. Happy New Year to everybody. You should have two documents. One is the loosely stapled management letter. There's only one item at the bottom of the first page, which is the same disclosure that we give you every year, which basically says that we prepared the financial statement and we conducted your audits. We have to let you know that. The absence of any other real, you know, recommendations is a good, is a good thing. So congratulations on that. Accountants don't tell you everything is working great because that's how they get into lawsuits. But you can kind of get that just from the absence of any recommendations. As far as the bound report goes, pages three and four is the independent auditors' report. Basically, it says that everything in our financial statement, we certify to being materially accurate and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which means it's up to code. You're following all the latest rules and regulations for the types of information that's incorporated into the report and how it's presented. Okay? Page five is an explanation as to how to read the report, but I'm going to go through it with you. Page six is a comparison of numbers from one year to the next. You can look at that on your own. I don't think you need me for that. On page seven, page eight, and page nine are a whole bunch of financial highlights in a narrative format. So for those of you who don't like numbers or aren't good with numbers, you can read those pages and kind of get an idea of what's happening at the library. I'll try to touch on some of those as we go through the report. Okay? So the first page with numbers is page 10. Page 10 is a balance sheet. It's one of the required financial statements, and it's a snapshot in time, meaning this is your fiscal year end of June 30th, 2020. And we list here all the good things that the library owned on that date. So at the top, you'll see assets, and the first line there is cash and cash equivalents. And you can see that the general fund had $2,182,000. The special purpose, the special purpose fund had $269,000, broken up into two different lines. Cash and cash equivalents means the money is ready to be spent, $177,000. $91,000, we are holding on to because it was given to us for endowment purposes and we're not allowed to spend it. So that gets listed in a separate line. So overall, slightly over $2,400,000 worth of cash. All of that money was safe, meaning it was protected by FDIC insurance. And anything over those FDIC limits was collateralized by the bank. So all the money was perfectly safe, and that's your job as a board member is to make sure that money is safe. So good job there. Other assets we have include prepaid expenses. We have a big grants receivable, $411,000 related to construction. And then we have our capital assets after depreciation, which are our building improvements and furniture and equipment, and that's valued at $1,242,000. If you go to the bottom of the page, you'll see our debts, also known as liabilities. That's the bad stuff. Okay? So we had $330,000 of accounts payable, bills laying around that needed to be paid, accrued payroll of $96,000, wages we owed our employees for days worked in June, but we didn't pay them until July, just because that's the way the payroll cycle fell. We have our accrued retirement, $47,000. Basically, we make an estimate as to what you owe for April, May, and June of 2020 to the New York State Retirement System, because the last bill we got carried us through March 31st. Okay? We did have some grant revenues received in advance, $23,000, so we're still obligated to spend that money. And then we have our non-current liabilities. We have compensated absences, which is a fancy term for vacation time we owe our employees, of $110,000. And then we have two more theoretical liabilities. These liabilities are truly debts of the entity of the, of the library, but they don't represent checks that we're going to have to write anytime soon. Okay? They're both calculated by actuarial actuaries. The obligation for post-employment benefits is supposed to represent, we're trying, the actuaries try to put on a number, because as you know, we pay our retirees health insurance until they pass away. So the actuaries say, okay, for all our current employees and our retirees, how much money should we have on hand now? If we were to close the library and we needed, how much money would we need to continue to pay those people for the obligation they've earned, for the, for the benefit that they've earned? And that was $5,548,000. The net pension liability, that represents, as you know, we're a member of the New York State Retirement System, they are underfunded at the moment. So this is our prorata slice, or our share of how much they are underfunded. So if they were to be made whole and they said, listen, we got to make ourselves whole on June 30th, all the libraries, the schools, everybody's got to send in some money, this would be our share. Okay? They're not doing that, so we don't have to worry about that. But that would be our share of their debt. Okay? On page 11, if you don't mind flipping to that page, you'll see that what we call the fund balance. The fund balance represents two things. It represents the difference between the assets and liabilities, so it's known as our net worth. It also represents the accumulated profits since the library was first in business. So any year we have a profit, our fund balance goes up. And every year we have a loss, our fund balance goes down. Okay? Our fund balance here is $2,114,000. That's better than it was last year, which is a good thing, because we had been getting a little bit lower in our fund balance. Fund balance is important. It's kind of like how much money you have in the bank? How much would you feel comfortable having? If you have a certified financial planner, or maybe you've read online somewhere, you know, people try to have three to six months' worth of cash in the bank should they have an unexpected emergency or lose their job. It's the same thing with the library. There should be a certain amount of cash or net worth that we want to have on hand to fund ourselves in an emergency. And what we've done is, or what the library board has done, is carved that out. And that's the unassigned piece. The unassigned fund balance that you see of $1,585,000 is being held for emergencies and cash flow purposes. The $510,000 that you see in that section has actually been earmarked by the board. It's part of our surplus, but the board has made motions in the past to say, let's communicate to the public why we have this money. $400,000 is being held for capital improvements. Okay? And $100,000, slightly over $100,000, is being held on hand in case we need to make any payments of that sticking vacation time that we owe our employees. So that's money that's quote-unquote earmarked. Okay? And then the $18,000 is part of our net worth that was related to those prepaid assets that we had, which were things we've paid for but not used yet. So it's part of our net worth, but the money has actually already been spent. Okay? So that's fund balance, and that's what that represents. Our special purpose fund also has fund balance. $91,000 is in the non-spendable row, and that means basically that was money that people gave to us in the past. It's not allowed to be spent. They gave it to us so that it would generate income to be spent on other purposes, and that's what's in that restricted row, restricted to specific purposes. And there's a note in the back that details how that money can be spent. Okay? Any questions on the balance sheet?
Quick question. We are at potentially four months of fund balance that's unassigned. We should increase that potential to six months perhaps, to be a little more conservative?
That's a good question, and that's always a constant, you know, battle or a constant dialogue that the board needs to have with itself. You know, how much do you feel that you want to have for a rainy day? As the tax cap gets tighter and tighter and tighter on the schools, okay? Some schools, we've noticed, have not been as forthcoming with tax dollars. Okay? And they hold on to them a little bit longer, and a little bit longer, and a little bit longer. So to have four and a half months of surplus and you're unassigned means that you can go four and a half months before you can't pay the payroll. So, you know, so you've got July, August, September, October. You could probably get to November 15th. That's usually when the schools start getting their tax revenues, and they're obligated to pass it on, even if they don't want to. So I think you're probably okay. It couldn't hurt to go a little bit more. Obviously, I would much rather have you with tons of cash, because we still have building improvements. We still have plans that we have to make and things that we need to do. And if at any point that unassigned, you know, row becomes more than four and a half months and a board member doesn't feel comfortable with it, I would say, let's make a board motion and shift it up to that committed line, and let's earmark it for something. We've got lots of things we could spend money on, not the least of which is also our obligation for post-employment benefits, retiree health insurance. You see, we have a big liability for that. So there are lots of things that the library is committed to and has an obligation for. The pension number is pretty big, too. So, yeah, let's, let's keep trying to generate a profit if we can, because there's lots of things we can spend it on. And you can have a discussion as to how many more months you want to have in the unassigned row.
Okay, thanks for that. And your answer lends thought to another question. You mentioned that there are school districts that are holding on to the cash without dispersing it for longer periods of time. Have you seen any significant changes from year to year? Does it look like there's potentially a buildup of school districts that are having trouble collecting their taxes because of the current economic circumstance?
What we've seen is, it was nothing worse this year than what we have seen in the past. But it seems like every year, I mean, we audit 75 libraries, something like that, and most get their money fairly regularly. And every year, there's one or two that'll call me and say, I expect my, it's September, I always get my money by now. What happened? You can call the school. Well, what do I do if I can't get it? Nothing you can do. You can ask them to borrow for you. Lots of schools take out a tax anticipation note. But odds are, if you're waking up to this in September, they've already taken out their tax anticipation note, and you're not going to get on it. Otherwise, now you can only wait until they get it. They have an obligation to give you a prorata piece as they get it, and most get it in November, December. That, that's why it's scary, and that's why you want to make sure you have enough cash on hand. And keep in mind, you know, what this number represents, this not only is your net worth, it's accumulated profits. So you'll have lots of taxpayers that say, boy, that's a lot of money. You know, $2 million, I mean, to any of us, $2 million is a lot of money. In the context of the size of this budget, it's not necessarily a lot of money. But taxpayers tend to look at things through their own cash position and say, boy, that's a lot of money that you got there. You need to raise taxes again? Can't you use some of that? Why don't you return it to us? So it's a constant battle as to how high you can go before the public feels uncomfortable with it.
Thank you.
I didn't have a chance to look this up, but at what point do we need to be concerned about federally mandated minimum wage payments going up? Will that affect us for this year? Do you know?
I don't, I didn't pay attention as to when they're going up. I don't think it's going to have too much of an effect in New York, because there are already rules in New York that the rates would do to go up.
Is our minimum wage already, I thought?
They've, they've been going up on a annual kind of a basis. So I think the minimum wage now is about $14. I don't know if Karen knows different, but I think it was around $14, and it's probably going up to $15 soon.
They've been raising it incrementally each year. So unless the federal government goes much higher than that, we should be okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that's your balance sheet. If you go to page 12, you'll see your income statement. Your income statement tells us how much you've earned and how much you've spent, not on a particular day, obviously, but the entire fiscal year. And this is for a year ending June 30th. This is a nice statement, because we can see fund buys fund and get a total. But as you can see on this page, there's not a whole lot happening in the special revenue, special purpose fund. We had $2,600 of interest and no expenses. All the other activity takes place in the general fund. So rather than look at this consolidated view, let's go to the back of the report. And if you don't mind flipping to page 33.
33.
Thank you. Page 33, we'll see our general fund in comparison to budget. And this will let me explain some of those variance highlights that we had in the front of the report.
33, you said?
33. Yep. Page 33. Of the, of the printed copy, I don't know, it might be a different page if you're looking at a PDF, but the printed pages, it's 33. Okay. You'll see the top line on that page is our largest revenue item, which is taxes. Ossning Union Free School District, we requested $4,850,000 from them, and that's exactly what we received. Okay, no budget variance there. Did everybody find it? Okay. In our operating revenue section, you'll see that we budgeted $127,900. We did significantly better at $562,000 for a $434,000 favorable variance. Most of that came within the other grants and aid line, where we booked a $411,000 construction grant. So that was nice. Other variances, fines and fees didn't work out so well. We were very lenient with charging those, especially with children. We're trying to encourage them to read more. We aren't going to penalize them. Gifts and donations did do better than anticipated. The Friends were very generous to us, and we collected $5,994, more dollars than anticipated. Interest income, we also did really good with our investments, and interest rates were higher than anticipated. So we had a $23,000 variance there. Okay? If you go down to the non-operating revenue line, we budgeted $15,000 for a transfer from the special purpose fund, but because we did so well with the other revenue lines that wasn't necessary, and we didn't move the money over. So overall, our revenues were $419,000 better than anticipated. As far as, if you go to the bottom of page 33, you'll see our largest expense category, and that's salaries. We budgeted $2,129,000. We spent $1,876,000. So we were $253,000 under spend. Basically, we had two unfilled library positions to start the year, and they weren't filled until October. So we were able to save some money there. And then also, due to COVID, fewer time hours were required, and we didn't, you know, we were able to save some money there as well. So overall, that was underspent. If you go to page 34, you'll see the employee benefits section. Basically, we budgeted $1,032,000 there. We only spent $836,000, so we were $195,000 under spend. Certainly, most of these items are going to be contingent or a function of the salary. So when you underspend the salary lines, you're going to underspend a lot of these benefits, particularly social security, workers' compensation. As far as the hospital and medical insurance went, not having those couple of employees, we were able to save. Also, one employee that we had counted on having coverage opted out of it, so we were able to have a savings there as well. Unemployment, there were no claims. We're self-insured for that, so if nobody puts in any claims, we don't have to pay any, and we didn't. And that's about it. That explains the $195,000 under expenditure. As far as library materials and programs go, you are probably, and you should be proud of this, probably the only library that I've had this year that overspent on this category.
Yes.
Both libraries you have, due to being closed, weren't able to purchase or receive, but because you guys underspent last year, I think you made a mission to make sure you overspent this year. And you did that, so congratulations on that. Library operations was underspent. I'm sorry, library operations, we budgeted $439,000, spent $398,000. So we were underspent by $41,000. Library supplies was affected by COVID. We were closed for a while, and we didn't purchase as many supplies as we thought. Professional fees was underspent by $12,000, because we budgeted for a long-term plan that was not developed by the end of the year. And then our tax tertiary is always very difficult to budget for. You're not exactly sure who's going to win their grievances of what we're going to have to pay. So we were underspent on that line as well. If you go to page 35, you'll see our building operation budget section. We budgeted $344,000. We spent $274,000, so we were $69,000 under spend. Again, COVID was like, was largely responsible for underspending our utilities. We didn't have as much usage, so that saved. And also repairs and maintenance, certain maintenance wasn't done during that period of time, and we saved there as well. Okay? Grounds maintenance, we were underspent, because that includes snow removal, and we had a very mild winter. So that, that explains that. As far as the capital outlay section goes, we did spend $470,000 on a boiler project that we didn't budget for, per se. So we were overspent there. The equipment was also overspent, because we bought some more computers and COVID-related safety items that had to be purchased. So we overspent that. Having said all that, some big variances, we still underspent on the expenditure side by $30,000. You combine that with the extra revenues we had, and we had a profit of $449,000, which is why our fund balance increased from the $1,006,000 that we had last year to the $2,100,000 that we saw on the balance sheet just a few minutes ago. Okay? Just remember, that's our scorecard. Any questions on any of that? That's, okay. Well, that, those are really the numbers in a nutshell. I don't know, I don't necessarily want to drag you through any of the other boring stuff.
That's the quickest update you ever gave us.
Is that good or bad?
It was excellent, because we're making money.
Okay. Well, yeah, I didn't have any internal control recommendations to pass on to you. I should tell you that Bob, you know, we always appreciate Bob. He does a great job maintaining the books and always makes it easy for us. So he did really well, too. And that's, that's it.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Any questions or comments? Karen, any questions or comments? Are you tuned in? Are you getting a signal?
I'm okay so far.
Okay.
No, I just want to thank Al. Him and his team always do such a great job.
Thank you.
All right, Al, you have a quick commute tonight.
Yes, this is, this is nice.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Everybody stay healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Lucinda, we're glad you could join us and hope everything's good.
You're on mute.
That, that's quite all right. Now, what we'll do is move on. If Dennis, you're ready to talk to us about the Friends.
Yes, I am. First of all, I'm really appreciative of being part of this meeting and wish everyone, hopefully, a peaceful year 2021. I'm still amazed, as my neighbor, even during these difficult times, the library is still finding ways to keep hand services and programs through the community. I want to thank my team, Barbara, Bonnie, and Michelle for their efforts and support. And, and we had very little activities, unfortunately, due to the virus. Deliveries to organizations, we did have 15 versus 43 last year. And deliveries to the homebound was 14 versus 68 last year. And it's kind of a shame, the people that really need books and the DVD, in most cases, we can't make any deliveries. Everything is locked down. I do have a meeting in early February with the Peace Corps, because they are finding ways, it's safer now, I guess, to handle things. And they may, for the domestic and write through some of the governments instead of going through the Peace Corps. I will keep in contact with all my organizations to see if any deliveries can be started. And Karen, it would be great if we could get that going with Maryknoll. I guess one of the questions that I have is, what are the roles of the Foundation and the Friends? We had said that we would pay for the renovation of the repairs of the Steinway piano, and then saw that, you know, the announcements coming out, the Foundation is paying for it. Can someone explain what is going on?
So Dennis, I think that back in December, Molly had sent an email to the Friends explaining that the Foundation was trying to, in its efforts to reform itself and its board, do some sort of visible fundraiser in the community so that it could have some success, knowing that the Friends had already committed to the repair of the piano, but also that there were other very large ticket items that we were asking the Friends to help us with. So the idea was to, you know, not necessarily take over what the Friends had committed to do, but supplement it and also free up Friends funds for some of those other, those other very big ticket items.
Well, any of the, so we won't provide any funds for the piano?
If the Foundation is successful at raising the full amount, then we would not ask the Friends to give any additional money towards the piano, but we would ask you to consider giving money towards the other things, you know, the, some of the major theater repairs and things like that that we had discussed.
So that would continue.
Right. But if the Foundation does not reach its goal, then we would ask the Friends if you would be able to fund the remainder of the piano found, repair.
That's fine. At least now we have a better understanding, and we'll work with you on that. The election of the Friends, is that going to happen online? Did I miss it?
What, do you mean the election of the Board of Trustees?
No, the Friends, the President, VP.
The annual Friends meeting?
I did send the notes to Mallory. I don't know if she's put them on the Friends page yet.
Okay, fine.
It might have just been a formatting thing. She tries to make everything look, you know, very friendly and interesting, rather than just scan a document in. So it's probably just waiting for her flair.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question, Dennis. One of the, the annual events that the Friends, more than annual, I should say, one of the events that the Friends put on is a book sale during the course of the year. I was wondering if there's any interest in possibly having an outdoor book sale? Maybe we can create a setting in the back, perhaps with a tent or something in the warmer months? Is there any interest perhaps in that?
I would bring it to the, you know, to the team, but I would see no objection. You know, I think it's a great idea. So, no, definitely, I'll bring it to their attention, but I'll get back to you, you know, by the end of the week. But I think it's a go.
Good, good. And I also want to share with everyone, and you too, Dennis, that the library has an anonymous donor who has paid for the membership of every one of our trustees on the Board of Trustees to become, renew our membership for this upcoming year with the Friends. So we're all members.
Thank you very much.
You bet. We all, we wanted to share that level of support with you.
Well, that's it, and I thank you.
That's very nice, whoever that was.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You bet.
Have a good meeting. Okay, well, thank you very much and have a good meeting. Take care.
Great, thank you, Dennis.
Bye.
Bye.
So the uh, we're at the point now, we're actually um, um, Karen, do we, I don't want to backtrack, but um, by the same token, should we have referenced the Friends into the plans for the foundation on the piano? There was a, a sense of disappointment.
Um, this was, unfortunately, this was all communicated back in December, and I think that there was a little bit of a misunderstanding. Um, you know, I've spoken to Dennis a couple of times about it, so I'm not quite sure, you know, why the misunderstanding is still there, but we can certainly do whatever it is to, you know, go forward.
Okay, not a problem. Um, we're at the point of our meeting where we will open the floor to public comment. Um, John, you're perhaps the only guest that isn't on the agenda, so if you have any questions or comments, uh, I open the floor to you at this time.
No, thank you. Uh, I am glad to be here uh, with the main purpose of listening and, and learning uh, what's going on. That was a uh, good news on the, from the audit report, terrific. And good news and, and, and good practices. So that's, that's always um, terrific to, to hear from any auditor. Um, and um, I know, I think we're um, looking at a couple of things uh, with WLS. Uh, I know IT uh, activities continue to be a part of the discussion. Um, looking through the um, you know, I, I know uh, Austin Library has, has been busy on uh, getting their uh, different new IT, IT services up and running and good, you know, glad to hear that. And, and obviously, as I said last time, I wish you, you know, best success with that. Um, I know there's some other discussions going on, uh, certainly with WLS on the uh, uh, SLA, uh, that is on the agenda for tomorrow uh, at the board meeting of WLS. So I know that's being discussed for um, uh, you know, for the, for the, for the new SLA for um, to really respond to the uh, audit uh, information that we had. So that will be discussed tomorrow. Uh, and we continue to, you know, trying to with, with a goal of uh, is it the opportunity to, to work together uh, to improve the network and, and improve um, uh, wireless and, and virtual uh, desktop environments, though that's not as pertinent for you, uh, for all the member libraries who are participating. So that continues to move forward uh, in the SLA. Um, and one wow, one uh, sort of save the date is that on March third uh, coming up will be a WLS Trustee Institute uh, by uh, being presented by Jerry Nichols. And he will be talking about a, a workshop that will focus on the roles and responsibilities of uh, library boards and directors. So that is a, a sort of a save the date for March third uh, Zoom at seven o'clock. Invitations uh, will be, be uh, putting together soon. And so I certainly uh, hope that uh, the board members of uh, Austining will find that of interest and, and attend. Uh, Jerry's uh, is, I haven't heard him before, but I understand he's a great presenter and has a long uh, history of experience uh, with library boards. And I think should be interesting both for people who have uh, have experience, but also uh, new uh, new board members. So again, it's the roles and responsibilities of library boards and directors.
So. That's at seven o'clock, you said?
Yeah, seven o'clock on uh, on, on uh, March third.
PM?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Again, thank you, and I look forward to continuing to listen and learn.
Sounds good. Thank you, John.
If anyone has any questions, happy to answer them.
Oh, I just wanted to mention, isn't the annual meeting on, on February third coming up? Cause I registered for it. The WLS Annual Meeting is February third?
No, that, our annual meeting is, is, is in November. I think February third, that is a um, uh, Westchester.
Oh, Library Association?
Association, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got that confused. Sorry about that. Okay.
I think theirs is earlier, so seven o'clock.
Yeah, too many acronyms, sorry.
March third. And it's March, March third, by the way.
Yep, we'll send out reminders. Thanks again.
Great, thank you.
Karen, if you're ready, I think we're up to the Director's Report.
Thanks, Matt. I was going to ask if it's okay, and if Michael is ready, could I ask Michael to go first before me?
Of course.
Michael, is that okay with you?
That's fine with me. Are we working from the uh, slides that you sent ahead of time, or should I just open something up? How do, how do you want me to proceed?
You should be able to share, Michael.
Okay. So let me just, as I'm navigating that, are, I want to first say thank you for the opportunity to work with the Board of Trustees, members and the staff, and in the short time that we have been working together, the uh, the meetings that I've had and the interactions have been um, very informative, and I think we'll, we'll get off to, we've gotten off to a good start. And I think we're going to make good progress to get your plan, get to the point where the plan is written. I have, uh, I sent along a timeline, updated timeline earlier um, that was sent, I believe, to the board members that gave an update to the actual process while we're getting engaged and moving through. Initially, when um, we first were engaging, we talked about this being a six month engagement to get you to the point of the plan being written and execution being started along the way. Uh, I think we're still along that, that timeline, and I don't see anything to change that. I'm not, I don't know that it's necessary to walk through the details of that, but everybody has that. Is that correct, Karen?
I had sent that out to everybody. Everybody should have received that.
So again, I'm happy to go through any of that in detail if, if you want, but where we are right now, just in summary, I've had one-on-one meetings with Board of Trustee members. I do have a couple of you I still have to get to. Forgive me if I haven't gotten to yet, but that, that'll be short, shortly coming. I think there are only about two people I have to get to. I've had uh, one-on-one meetings with staff, uh, senior staff. So Karen and Molly and I have been meeting alternating weeks, but then I also had one-on-one meetings with senior staff. I want to share in summary some of the, some of the themes that have come out of those conversations as I shared with Karen and, and Molly. Um, lots of enthusiasm around moving forward for the plan of twenty twenty one through twenty twenty four. A lot of energy about the focus being on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And a lot of opportunity to bake into this plan. Um, some of the great work that was completed in the previous plan, as well as some of the things that uh, were, were started but not fully progressed through. So I think we'll have foundationally something to build upon. The opportunities initially when we start our meetings with the subcommittee, which I'll talk about in a second. The opportunity will be most immediately to make sure that we have alignment around diversity, equity, and inclusion. What does that mean to have a strategic plan with that focus? Uh, not that there's a lot of divergence in what those three terms mean, but it certainly is important if we're going to have a focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, that we are all on the same page for what that means. Uh, and, and I engage, I think everybody on this call knows, I asked each, each and every one of you what it meant to you individually. So uh, while there was a lot of commonality, there were some opportunities for us to get, get that alignment. Uh, the other thing that was evident in having that conversation, while the Austin Public Library has a very clear uh, and concise mission and vision statement. Uh, in my work with building strategic plans, there, there is a vision for the plan. And that's going to be one of the first things when the subcommittee comes together too, to get some clarity around what is the vision for three years from now, when the plan is actually finished and completed. So we, we can look back and look at macro as well as the individual goals, strategies, and tactics. And then the last thing that came out of my conversations, that was pretty consistent across the board. The last plan was applauded that we actually had a plan. Uh, moving forward, we like to see a little bit more granularity in this plan. Uh, meaning that we go from overarching goals to strategies or tactics and be able to actually track milestones along the way and celebrate successes. I'm going to share one document. It's in, it's a very rough stage, so I'm not going to share the entire piece, but I want to share uh, part of this, and that is, so the last thing is taking all of that information and how do we start to shape how we're going to put it into a document? And there's a number of different ways. You have a previous template that I looked at. Um, and it's, and it's fine, but it's, it, it, it probably doesn't allow for us to have as much quantitative and qualitative building. So I'm offering to Karen and Molly initially, and then the subcommittee, a couple of different options. And one of the template options uh, that I'm going to recommend, that I am recommending, I'll share just a, a couple of slide covers from that for tonight. Let me know if you can see that. Thumbs up, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so um, I'm going to slideshow mode here. So this is basically a cover, cover slide, not much to elaborate on. If this is going to be made public facing, then you want to make sure your visual looks good. And since we have a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, I just put a stock picture in there to hold it. Certainly can put any other picture you want. The plan will have a table of content. And so that anybody reading the, the um, document can actually refer to different sections without having to go page by page before getting to what they might have an interest in. Similar to your audit, it'll follow a flow of this is what you can focus on. Sometimes people want to focus right on the executive summary and overarching goal, and they don't want to get into detail. Placeholder for us to, to have the mission and vision of the library and the plan, any strategic plan should refer back to the macro. But then when you talk about the mission and vision, what does it mean relative to the plan? And in this case, foundationally, you see diversity, equity, inclusion at the bottom of this pyramid, which is foundation of the plan. That foundation should lend itself to enhancing, enhancement of the current services and, and programs. Uh, that should lend itself to innovative new services and programs. And then um, that should build upon be in re-energizing of current patrons and ultimately, as we execute the plan and as we do it with a diversity, equity, inclusion focus, we have a greater traction and engagement of more of Austining's ethnically diverse community. Again, any one of these pieces of the, of the pyramid can be changed. As I said, this is a rough draft based on input I've got today. Okay, so none of this is baked in. Uh, the timeline, uh, tentative timeline again, has, hasn't been finalized yet, but we will try to follow a regular meeting schedule. That will be inclusive of my regular meetings with Karen and Molly, regular meetings with the strategic planning, subcommittee, and regular reports out to the full board. And all of this information will be on the desk that anybody can refer to at any point and hold us accountable. And then, uh, and this, as I said, these are just my, my uh, write-up of what I heard, but it should be something in the plan that talks to the chartering of the subcommittee, so we, the subcommittees is clear on what its charter and purpose is and what it's driving towards. And anybody can say, okay, you got a full Board of Trustees, what's the subcommittee? Anybody reading this should understand how the, the subcommittee has been empowered and enabled by the full board and what latitude it has to speak on behalf of the full board. And then we'll get into the roadmap. This is the framework. So what is the framework that we'll run, run from? Recommending, we have a framework of thinking about the road, the roadmap for the path forward. We look at the results from the previous plan. We celebrate those again, reinforce those as we move forward. And then we vision, do some visioning work for what good will look like twelve months, twenty-four months, thirty-six months. And then we go into the overarching goals. All of this work, and this I'll stop on sharing here, all of this work, if we go back to the timeline that's in here, is intended to get us from today to about March, where we should be prepared as a subcommittee to come to the board and say, we've gotten everything, we've got focus groups, whether we use surveys, more outreach in the community, we've done all of that. We pulled it together and now we can codify and confirm and affirm what overarching goals, what's our vision? And now directionally, are we on the same page, everybody? And we move forward to filling in the details, putting the meat on the bone. I'm going to get out of that and just say, I've enjoyed the conversations, uh, lots of work to be done. Um, but the most exciting aspect of this, of this is uh, you got a real good foundation to build upon. Some of the cautions I give you as your consultative partner is that we, it is critically important. I, I always separate buy-in from commitment. We need a hundred percent commitment from all Board of Trustee members. We need a hundred percent commitment from the staff, all the staff, because they'll do the heaviest lifting. And there's a big difference between buy-in and commitment. So we need a hundred percent commitment, which starts with a hundred percent alignment on vision, strategies, goals, and real candid conversation around SWOT analysis. What are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are the opportunities, and what are the threats? And so, again, I refer back to the very first time I met with you as a board. And Matt asked a question, should we be learning about ourselves from a diversity and inclusion perspective, and would that be ideal? And yes, that would be ideal, but we're going to be learning and doing at the same time. Okay, so I'm going to stop there. I, I wasn't expecting to give a bigger overview or presentation tonight, but I, the question I would ask is on what you've heard from me, are we directionally aligned? Am I thinking about the things the right way in order to be a good partner?
My purposes, you are. I was encouraged to uh, see the timeline. I feel that uh, March is a pretty good um, period to, to aim for, and I appreciate the range and the flexibility you told us is baked in. And I, I like the, the formulation of the process where the foundation is, um, I don't remember the phrasing, but uh, equity oriented, and it builds up from there. So yes, I feel we're in alignment.
Anybody else?
I, I'm looking forward to um, your leadership and helping kind of direct our energies and hopeful aspirations and um, you know, good wishes in a positive direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is so exciting. Thank you so much, and thank you for putting so much thought into it in advance as we start the process.
Well, we're off to a good start, folks. I want you to feel good about that, and um, again, appreciate your individual times. Uh, we got, we have, uh, oh, Karen's going to ask tonight, uh, we need to get, I need to get together with some community leaders, so she wants to get that from this board. But um, I'm, I'm ready to go as soon as I have contact. And for the board members that I didn't get to, again, expect that I'll be reaching out to you tomorrow to get on your schedule for an hour. Okay? Karen, is there anything that you want me to cover that I didn't cover? Molly, Karen?
No, no.
Good.
I think you covered um, everything that we talked about.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
And congratulations on an excellent audit report.
Thank you. We're very proud of it.
The, the, the one thing I learned from tonight, and thanks Karen for inviting me on that, we need to build into the plan, build from, build forward from that audit, because that's an excellent report. And one of the questions I guess we should ask ourselves as we build the financial part is Matt asked, what's the right level of fund balance to have as, as a nonprofit? Matt asks, what's the right level of fund balance to have as, as a nonprofit? When I worked in nonprofit, our goal was minimum of four months. But we, we tried to stay at six months, that was our operating philosophy, to try to stay at six months. And when you get beyond six months, you do have funders and people on the outside that say, oh, you're too healthy as a nonprofit, which sometimes more money, so.
Then we start earmarking things.
Yes. Again, thank you, have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Michael.
Stay well.
Michael, we
Thank you, Michael.
Good night. Michael, we worked hard to get that audit to where it is now. It took several years, really devoted effort on Bob's part and Karen's part, and
Yeah, good work.
Where we have really
Build on it.
So it's good.
Thank you. So Karen, I was, I don't know if everyone caught it, but when we were doing the audit. One of the points in having excess money was that we didn't spend what we budgeted for last year on a strategic plan. And I thought Michael was going to say, well, you didn't spend the money, I didn't charge you enough. Hey Joe, are you ready with the director's report?
Yes, I am ready with the director's report, let me just get there in my packet. I'll try to keep it really brief, because we have a lot else on the agenda.
Fourteen pages, Karen.
Yeah, I know.
A lot of stuff going on.
We're all a bunch of overachievers here. We're discussing AC5 later in the agenda, so I'm not going to bother about that. I'm begging your forgiveness, I'm late on my draft budget proposal, normally I like to have you something solid by January. Bob has the numbers that he needs, but then I always like to move things around, put things over here, ask Bob what this would look like, what that would look like, and it's just been quite a year, so my goal is to have something together within the next three weeks, I'd like the finance committee then to meet and take a preliminary look at it, and then hopefully have a decent draft for you by February with the anticipation of passing it in March, so I beg your forgiveness and, and your understanding on that front. New broadband is in, it's awesome, it's excellent, it's fast, we're going to work over the next few months to bring more of the computers from the old network onto the new network, I'm eagerly anticipating Allison's return. Because that's going to be the bulk of what she's working on when she comes back from her leave. As far as the E-Rate goes, I went through another round of paperwork with E-Rate. I want to put on record, honestly on record, like in the minutes Kathy, that we, and I in, in particular, owe huge thanks to Oscar Davis, President of the Mount Vernon Public Library Board of Trustees, he is an E-Rate expert, he has given me so much of his time and his expertise. He helped me out of a paperwork nightmare with E-Rate, I was afraid we weren't going to get it. And I just want that to be put on record. We are holding steady right now with our services during COVID, I have to say, it's a little bit disconcerting as we start to get positive cases in the library. No one now knows how anybody gets everything, anything, but I will say that for the most part, the positive cases, there's generally some sort of known other person who they were exposed to not in the library. So that's a good thing, but in some cases, you're never going to know where the exposure happened. We're going to keep steady on this front unless I feel we get to the point where we just can't do it anymore. Or if we get to the point where we're having trouble staffing the building and staffing services, so we're sort of walking a fine line right now, we're trying to keep as many people working from home who can work from home. As much as we can, so that we can social distance within the building where we have tight office spaces. But you know, for some people's job responsibilities, sometimes that just isn't possible, or isn't possible to the extent that we would like, so we're again sort of floating with that balancing act.
How many cases do you have now?
Right now, we have two positive cases that I heard about on Friday night, and one positive case that I heard about on Saturday morning. The Friday cases did not have any close exposure in the library. And the Saturday case possibly had two folks who were exposed to the positive case back on Thursday. So we have two people, we have three people quarantining because they are COVID positive. We have two people quarantining, quarantining, well, not, not technically quarantining, staying out of work. Because they were potentially exposed to the positive, one of the positive people at the library. And then we have another individual who has, who was, she had exposure to somebody outside the library and is in preventative quarantine from the library, but her results were positive, or I'm sorry, were negative, were negative.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so she still has to stay out for the period of time for the 10 days, but she's asymptomatic. So we're, so we're juggling all of that.
Wow, thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
I'm sorry, while you juggle all of this, is it putting an additional strain on the people who are there in the library and keeping the library open?
In keeping the library open, not yet. One of the departments was harder hit, this, for the, the, the case on Saturday with the two exposed people. But she is able to staff the department right now. I foresee that if we, if we keep going along this pattern, we may end up having trouble staffing the library. What we may have to do is think about cutting back the, the, the grab and go hours, the browsing hours, because those are the hours that we need most staff in the building. But we have to sort of, you know, see how it goes over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
It is, I will say it is putting a, a, an emotional and anxiety strain on everybody, that's definitely for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I want to congratulate Susie Zavarella, who completed her Master of Library Science degree, we are all very proud of her. And have been looking forward to this day for a long time, so I'm very happy about that.
It's been a long time in coming, so like, we really need to be happy about this.
Yes, yep. It's something, it's always good to have these kinds of things to celebrate, and that's a big one. Virtual annual meeting, if you haven't looked at it already, please look at it, Mallory did a great job, pulled out a lot of her hair doing it, but she did a great job. Something I wanted to fly by the group tonight, I didn't add it, I didn't ask Matt to add it to the agenda for us, I figured I'd cover it in my report. As we do the piano fundraiser, which has been having so much good, so many good responses from, from people in the community. We've also had a lot of interest by piano tuners and repairers who would like to bid on the tune, on the repair of the piano. We have a, an estimate for, or a quote from the person who does already take care of our piano, so you know, I don't want to say we're definitely, we definitely should pick that person, but in my mind, you know, that's the person who we trust and who's been taking care of the piano, but we have been inviting others to provide estimates. We did, we were asked by Stecker and Horowitz, they're the gentlemen who do the, the piano series, the Young Artists Piano Series. To allow the person who they would like to repair the piano to provide an estimate, and we said, that's fine. The person is, would charge us for the estimate of four hundred and something thousand dollars, I want to say four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. My initial inclination is to say no, but they didn't like my initial answer, so I said I would bring it to the board of trustees for you to say yes or no.
Can I hop in here?
What's that? Yeah.
Matt, do you want to go?
No, no, go, go.
Oh, so I don't know if I broke any board of trustee rules here, but I thought with all of the work we've had done in our church. I just texted my organist, I said, do we pay people to do estimates on rebuild and repairs? That's all I asked him. And he said, no, you shouldn't pay a fee for that. And then he said, why are you asking? I said, I'm just asking with respect to the work that we need to do, he didn't realize I was on the board. For the piano at the library, so then he just went down a list of people. And I just, he mentioned one person that I think Karen touched on, who has a relationship already. It was not a thumbs up, he said he was there, because James Trapasso asked him to come in, I learned, to take a look at the piano. And he said, I went in there and I was told it had already been tuned, and when I played it, it really was not great. So I don't know if you want me to send you the piano tuners that he had mentioned, good and bad, if that would be a help, but this was like a rabbit hole I did not plan to get into, because I don't know about this stuff at all, I just asked him a little question and it kind of mushrooms.
Right, well, I don't know why James said it had just been tuned, because that has not been tuned since pre-COVID. So it's been since, probably, at least since last February, it's probably been about a year. So that wasn't the right information, but yes, if you'd like to send that information to me, I can certainly take a look at it.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you. So I, I'm seeing lots of no's, don't pay for an estimate. Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, no.
Excellent, thank you, I will bring that information back, and
If they like him so much, Stecker and Horowitz can pay for it.
Thank you.
What I thought too, but I didn't say it, sorry.
What was the price again that they said?
I'm sorry?
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Something like that, yeah. Yep.
I've never heard of that before.
Yeah. Thank you, the cards from the board of trustees that were sent to the staff were very well received. We had to do them as New Year's cards instead of Christmas cards, because there was a mess up in the printing of them. But we were able to get it done, Mallory, you can thank Mallory for that, she got that done. We are, we are rescuing an Arts Westchester grant that we were going to lose from 2020, there was a program that was granted, granted, but couldn't be done, so Susie's going to go ahead and try to put something together, it was for a Capoeira program for teens. The Mount Vernon Public Library, it has formed an urban libraries group. For those of us who serve, who have larger libraries and serve very diverse populations. And I think it's going to be a good group if, if we keep it up, and I'll bring more information as we go along, but one of the things that they felt was important was to connect boards of trustees and board presidents in particular, so I know Matt, that's been something that you've been very interested in, and I kind of hope to see that come to fruition as we go along.
All ears.
Okay. The W, there was, I have a typo in my report, the WSIT finance model was voted on in December. And it was approved, it, it's no longer in the future. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, I want to give Molly a big thank you for attending the Austining Terrytown Network meetings for me every month. They've been in conflict with the PLDA meetings. We're still having the, the PLDA weekly chats, which I do attend, I find them helpful, so I'm expecting Molly to continue along those meetings, but it's a wonderful group, and I can't
Yeah.
For going for me. The Austining School Board honored the children, five children who completed the 1,000 Books Project on December 9th, so I thought that that was really nice. And Ignira is working with Nancy Arroyo of the school district, because we've gotten a number of children attending our virtual homework help program, who are more comfortable speaking in Spanish. Ignira was jumping in and helping them for each session, but then realized it, it was a lot of children, and it's a lot of sessions. So Nancy is bringing to us some Spanish-speaking volunteers from the high school to help out with that program, which I think is a really nice partnership.
That program is actually very well utilized than the homework.
Yeah, yeah, at first, during the pandemic, in the early fall, it wasn't getting a lot of use, and we were a little worried about it. But then Ignira did some push through with the help of the school district. And, and I think too, at the beginning of the school year, people were just sort of getting their bearings, students were getting their bearings, parents were getting their bearings. And now it's, it's pretty well, it's very well used, I would say.
We also have Steve Alpert, who's on Math and Vision, is that getting what we use, the advanced math tutoring?
Yes, that is on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and he always has students. My son is one of them. So.
Karen, quick question, when you talked about the Spanish-speaking students, it brought to mind, it goes back probably two years now, the adult Spanish class that Grandma was teaching. Did we lose all those adults because they didn't like the, no?
No, no, Guillermo modified the classes as we had discussed. And most people continued attending the classes, everything sort of got juggled around with COVID, of course. But he's, he's been able to maintain the classes that we had restructured throughout COVID. And it's very, very popular, and he's got a lot more students now than he did.
Wow.
Yeah. So that's been really good. I want to just give a shout out to Marie Pierre and for Susie Zavarella too, for sort of encouraging Marie in this, in this direction. Marie had applied for and was accepted to the Nyla Developing Leadership's, Leaders Program. And out of that came a Nyla Pathways to Librarianship Task Force. Which is looking towards, I'll read it, because it's long, increasing equitable opportunities for historically underrepresented groups to enter the library profession, gain viable employment employment and create, maintain sustainable clear, I can't read, career leadership opportunities. I'm so thrilled that Marie is involved in that, that's something that we've been talking about for a long time and just sort of talking. And so the fact that she is actually involved in something like that, I think is wonderful.
I put three stars on that part of your report, I was so happy.
Yeah, yeah, we're so, we're so lucky.
Can I mention Pam?
Oh, no, I didn't mention Pam, why don't you mention Pam, Molly?
One of our part-time buildings and grounds staff people, Pamela Keimer, who also is a full-time custodian with the school district and has a diverse background. I think her BA is in sociology, but I'll double check that, but anyway. She became interested in library school, library science, through her work at the library. And she has applied for the program at the University of Buffalo, the one that Susie just recently completed, and she was accepted. So we're very excited that Pamela was inspired by the library and taking another path, so we're looking forward to helping her.
Yep, I mentioned to her that she should keep us in mind for her internship.
Yes, yes, that's, that's very much what I think should happen. Is, is Marie Pierre still doing the social worker school too, or no?
I understand that she is, yeah.
Okay, because that's really also a really terrific sort of, it seems like so many of the webinars that I've taken related to the pandemic and libraries have talked about that model.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some sort of social work expertise into the library in terms of making community referrals and stuff.
Yes.
Good to know.
Are there any questions?
I have a question, a COVID question.
Sure.
As more and more people are able to get the vaccine over the course of the next weeks and months, however long it takes. Is there, is it appropriate, or do we have any interest as an institution to either encouraging, I don't want to assume we could direct people to be inoculated. But are we taking a stance on that, can we incentivize it, can they get it, are they off that they get the vaccine?
We can certainly
Personal thing, it's a very personal thing, and we shouldn't get involved at all.
We can certainly incentivize it, we have, in the past, we've incentivized people getting the flu shot. We've actually brought Walgreens into the library and set them up downstairs and had them inoculate staff members who wished to get a flu shot. And I think if we had that opportunity, that would be really great, but we can't require people to do that.
I understand, but
Good question.
Offering that down the road, that'd be great if we could just put it on, you know, the back burner when it becomes available.
Yeah.
I have a, just a more general question about COVID and whether or not Austining as a community continues to increase the number of people who have COVID. And what does that mean for, you know, the library and how people are coming in and out? The increase in the number of children who have COVID, who again, coming into the library and, you know, people's sort of belief that children don't get it.
Right, so our numbers have been pretty steady. There have been increases. But the, you know, when they look at the number of cases versus the hospitalizations, it seems to be pretty steady. I will say that as far as children go, we have not been getting very many children in the library at all. So that is unfortunately a good thing right now. We get a few kids in with their family, you know, little ones who whose moms and dads or grandparents or caregivers give them. But again, those are very few and far between. The Children's Department is actually quite sad because they're not getting the people who they used to get. And as far as like middle schoolers or teenagers go, we really haven't been seeing very many folks in the building at all. Definitely not downstairs on the lower level. And if they get one or two people in the teen room at any given time, they get very excited.
I just noticed that, you know, Austining has had very high numbers. And, you know, in and around the community, I really don't see anything that would, you know, make you believe that there's any urgency around it. So, you know, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah.
I'll finish back.
Yeah, it's, as far as the numbers of people coming into the building, that was one of the things that I was really concerned about when we stayed open and all the other libraries locked their doors is, oh my gosh, all these people are going to flock to the library and we're not able to manage or control it and our numbers are going up, et cetera. And that has not been a problem. The volume of people in the building has been incredibly steady, but ma- very manageable and relatively light. I would, I mean, really light as compared to pre-COVID, but relatively light in terms of what I was expecting. And the, when we we make appointments for people to use the study tables, I don't think, and we have them booked at every other study table, one person, every other study table. I think they have spots for nine people when they use the far-off table. I don't know that we've ever had nine people in there at any given time. Yeah, so the traffic is, the traffic is pretty manageable, I would say.
Okay.
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions for Karen? Thank you, Karen.
Welcome.
We'll move on to the committee reports. The first one up is the President's Report. I have a question. It's, it's, I've given a lot of thought to the outside volunteering that we do as board members and as the director does tonight. There's reference to the Austining Tarrytown Network. I know that Karen's been involved with Communities That Care and the Community Partners Group and the Racial Equity Task Force. I'm involved with the racial, some of us are involved with that. I was wondering if if we, if we need a process, if it would be appropriate for us to, on an ongoing basis, share. Not looking to regulate, I'm not looking to take anything away from the director's efforts or diminish them. But by the same token, I was wondering if we, if we had that awareness and that transparency that we could give thought to what we're doing and maybe if there's overlap or there's a gap, more importantly, that there's a group we should reach out to. I don't know that our outreach is really coordinated, or maybe it doesn't need to be. So really, just to bring to your consciousness the idea that if we're representing the board in a capacity as a trustee, maybe we should be, maybe you should have a process where it's recorded somewhere, either in the minutes or someone says, oh, I started, I'm now on the Comprehensive Plan Committee for the town. Okay, now it's in the minutes and it's official. And so at this point, I'm not suggesting there be a coordinator or an outreach committee. But down the road, I would like to bring it up again for further discussion now that I I brought it to your, to the forefront of your mind.
Don't we need to disclose that on our Conflict of Interest form every year?
Well, we don't, but we could.
That's fine. I think that, isn't that form Financial Conflict of Interest?
It could be extended and expanded.
So are you saying that when people are involved with another group that they're representing the library?
Well, I am on the Comprehensive Plan, yes. I'm on as the President of the Board of Trustees.
Well, maybe that needs to be listed somewhere so that we are aware of that, but I don't know.
But I don't, I'm not reading this as like a punitive or, you know, don't do this. I think that section, if we added that line to Conflict of Interest, Shanti, I'm thinking we can kind of take a look to see what our sphere of, what our sphere circles of influence are in different pockets in the community, which is a good thing to know. Is that kind of what you're saying, Matthew?
Yes, in a very neutral benign way that, and also as
And I'm not looking at it as Conflict of Interest as that term generally means.
Right.
What I'm looking at it as knowing that there are people on the board that are involved with certain groups. That's what I'm talking about, just, just knowing it, not, not really having anything to do with what it is. I mean, Matthew's talking about something different because as a board president, he's representing the library on uncertain, you know, groups and committees. But for the rest of us, you know, that's different. Like you're saying, Cecilia, just knowing that, you know, people are, you know, involved with other parts of the community, I think is a good idea and probably is going to end up coming out in the work with Michael Holmes.
That's right. I appreciate your comments and that's what I was looking for, input.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that it would, it would be helpful to me and I'm sure Michael to know where our spheres of influence lie.
Okay, thank you. And I have, it's been brought to my attention that I overlooked an item on our agenda. We will backtrack for a moment. We have to approve the minutes of our prior meeting, the December 16 meeting. Two of us were not in attendance, so it would be Cecilia and Amanda. The rest of us can take a question to gather our thoughts. If you want to review that paperwork, do you have any questions or comments regarding the minutes from the last meeting? Give you a moment. And there being none, I will, I'm open to a motion to accept the minutes of our prior meeting and a second.
A second.
And Alice, form the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any objections or abstentions? If there being none, it passes. Right, the two people that can't vote. Thank you. And thank you for that reminder. And we'll move on to the next committee report, the policy and bylaws and personnel. I don't know if we have any updates.
I do have two comments to make. Or actually, one, yes, first has to do with looking, I have in my records a long list like this. And it is the policy tracking paperwork. There are items on the policy tracking that I think may be good for us to return to now that we've addressed all the policies that were sort of needed there, our immediate attention. So I don't know if everybody on the committee has this paperwork, but maybe we could have a committee meeting in the near future and the committee could look at this policy tracking and decide which policies we should move forward in our discussion about them. Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good, good. So in terms of setting up a date to do this, I don't know if it's easy to do it immediately, but I'll be in touch with you, Karen. And we'll get some dates out to everybody.
Yep, we can do a little poll.
Okay, good. And then the other thing that we had was, it says on the, on the agenda here, to review the board performance and that report, which Matthew, you had sent out to all of us. And I believe it was also discussed last month and I wasn't there at the meeting, so I wasn't part of that discussion.
It's a resolution to accept tonight, number 74.
I see that. And, and so that's great. And I wanted to, I guess around four o'clock this afternoon, I, we all got an email from Lucinda with alternatives for
No, no, not alternatives, actually additions, just an addition. Just a consideration, that's all.
Okay, so if these are considerations, shall we move forward with the resolution as it is proposed? And then the considerations will be addressed at a later date? Is that what you're saying, Lucinda?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, because I wasn't exactly sure how we were moving forward.
No, I think the email stated really clearly that this is a very important guide that Karen was using to send to us. It's something I'm really familiar with and that the information that I sent were earlier trustee evaluation suggestions that I've made. And there's two small forms that they use, which I think are very succinct and very useful for maybe us to consider in discussion.
Okay, okay. So we'll keep that sort of as an addition to what we have here.
It's not a replacement at all.
All right, good, that's good to be clear. So, okay, so we're moving forward with this and thank you. I think this is a good, a good guide to have in hand. And are we then going to set up points or dates in the future when we will be discussing the different areas in this guide? Is that the thought?
Yes.
Okay.
You know what I had hoped is I'd hoped that this would be a part of what Michael is discussing with all of us in a group? Because basically we're, we're doing a self-analysis, a self-evaluation of how either effective our board is or what our goals are. And that ties right into a long-range strategic plan. So you see how this is like a perfect melding of what he is talking to us individually and then we get into group discussions? The trustee self-evaluation, which is an individual and then a group evaluation, it's sort of, you know, it broadens out into the longer range part of what we're trying to do.
But Lucinda, what it doesn't include is diversity, inclusion and equity. And that's what he's being hired to do. Yes, in the lens, in the context of what we're doing, but that's, no, that's not what he's doing.
I guess I'm confused because my conversation with him, he asked that we individually evaluate ourselves and that as a board, we evaluate ourselves. And that's based on what we're discussing in terms of diversity and inclusion. So it's not separate, it's all a part of it, Shanti.
Well, that's not the impression I got, so maybe that needs to be clarified.
I, I didn't see diversity and inclusion and equity language in this board self-evaluation. Now, it doesn't mean they wouldn't compliment one another, but I don't think this was specifically designed to address that kind of a focus.
Yeah, that's why I kind of look at it separately.
Once we adopt it in a resolution, once we adopt it, then we can move forward with it, correct?
That makes sense.
I agree.
Actually, how this fits together is on page eight with our strategic planning. So in terms of this guide, strategic planning is exactly what we're doing with Michael. And so as we discuss with him what we have, you know, in terms of our action plans and specific action goals, that fits into page eight right here. The board creates goals and actions based on our strategic plan.
Okay.
So it, I mean, yes, this is a general template that Karen is giving us, the Practical Guide to Board Self-Evaluation. But we get to determine what our focus is and what our interests and what our guidelines are. So this is just a template. This isn't like
It's, it's meant to be a starting point because we've never done it before.
Exactly, exactly. But it should work in, you know,
Lucinda, I'm the one that suggested that we do it. Okay, and so if you wanted to do all this extra work, maybe then we didn't have to hire Michael. But that's not what the case was. So I'm in favor of using that template because this is not the first time we've looked at it. So I'm in agreement with using it. But let's not be mistaken that that particular template is not what he is doing. They're two separate things.
I think you're completely misunderstanding me.
I must be. That's what I said. Maybe we should talk to him.
May I just, may I just finish it again?
There's a misunderstanding.
So Library Board's Practical Guide to Board Self-Evaluation, and that's a general template. What Michael is doing for it is for us is very specific. He's leading us through discussions and through goal planning, which ties into the self-evaluation that we're doing. So it's sort of
Lucinda, what you're not going to do
They're not separate.
Is try to explain to me something that is in your head about what you want to do. That's fine, but we're in a board meeting where all of us are, tonight, we're accepting or not that template. That's it.
Right, we, we will, we will work after that.
I'm really confused. I have no idea what you're talking about.
We're going to meld the two things together. We're just not going to do it right now. They're definitely going to overlap and they're going to interact.
I'm sorry, the only thing I was trying to explain is that the guide that Karen gave us to use, this United for Library, fits in quite well with what Michael is doing for us.
Good.
So they overlay together, so they're not separate and that's it, that's all.
We're singing the same tune.
I hope so.
If there are no other questions or comments for the Policy and Bylaws and Personnel Committee, we'll move on to Finance. And we have an item for the budget update, audit review. I think we've largely covered that. Is there anything else from Finance at this time? And I'm glad
No, there isn't.
I'm glad you joined us. I, I realize you're having problems with that signal, but I'm glad you're
Yeah.
And then Buildings and Grounds is the next item. This is a big, big topic. Air conditioning is not repaired. Is it? So we'll open it up to Cecilia and/or Karen at this time.
I can start if you want, Cecilia. You're muted. So we had, we had a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting last week. And the reason I asked the Buildings and Grounds Committee to meet was because we learned from Clean Air that the proposal to fix AC5, which the board approved on in October, was only half of the proposal to fix AC5. The situation occurred that they gave us that proposal and at that time, that's what they felt needed to be repaired. Subsequently, I don't know when, maybe in November, they were in doing something else and noticed another problem with AC5 and thought they had given us a second proposal to do the rest of the work on AC5, but had not. So we learned about this as they were doing, as they were starting to do the work that had been approved by the board back in October. They started to do that work very end of December, early January. And the delay was because they needed to have those giant coils manufactured, which took quite a long time, about 12 weeks. So I asked them to come to a Buildings and Grounds Committee with Jim Dolan from OLA. He's the consulting engineer who we use to sort of help us through these decisions that we have to make to explain what happened and to talk about why the second repair is needed. Cecilia or Amanda or Matt, do you, would you like to add anything else that I'm not?
I guess, one of the things that, thanks for opening this up. I guess one of the things that I misunderstood initially was I thought that this hiccup arose out of their negligence to fully disclose the scope of the work, which is why I asked you privately, can this be covered under their errors and omissions provision on their insurance plan? And then when I was in the meeting, it sounded like it was more of it was more of a matter of once they got into the job, when they saw how compromised AC5 was, then the requirements and the needs changed. And that kind of caused our revisiting this project. Am I correct?
You're correct. They were in doing some preliminary work to prepare, you know, to do some of the repair work. And that's when they noticed it. Unfortunately, at the time they noticed it, they, they thought they brought it to our attention and thought they had sent a proposal. We did not. So that, that was the, I don't know if you could, we would call it negligence. I would call it a breakdown in communication.
Okay.
I think the key, the key for me is the line in the, in your notes that this is being caused by our system that pulls groundwater up and silt and sand that destroys the mechanisms repeatedly. In a couple of years, it just wears it out.
Yeah. I thought, I found the meeting to be really helpful actually because I, I don't, I've been told before, we've all been told that the sand that's pulled up through the, from the geothermal wells and the hot water that's pulled up from the geothermal wells damages the equipment and shortens its lifespan. I don't think it really hit home for me until we had that conversation in the Buildings and Grounds Committee. You know, we're, we're wearing through equipment in a way that we should not be, which sort of underlines for me the fact that we have to get away from, and, and we are, we're on that path, it's just taking forever. We have to get away from, we have to move towards a, a path where we're not relying on the wells and not bringing that water through our systems.
And I think one of the things that I really appreciated, Jim Dolan suggested was number one, to have like a, initially a comprehensive overview of, you know, what the weaknesses are and what the potential, I guess hazards and needs are of this project going forward. And then beyond that, having like an annual checkup on the system, because I don't think that's written anywhere in our agreements with Clean Air.
We don't have a service contract with them where they do any sort of preventive maintenance. We do, John Tortoso does call them in when he needs them to do preventive maintenance work that he is unable to do. But we're not on like, we're not on a rotating schedule with them for that.
Looks like we need it.
Actually, going through the discussion, I felt like I had gained so much greater confidence in Jim Dolan as being our voice and our representative and really questioned Clean Air about, you know, how responsible they are. But to, as, and Karen, as you said, to learn about all the problems that are in place with this, this AC5, you know, I mean, it was put in backwards, you know, that it seems like there's no way to save this at all.
Right.
It's just a money pit.
Yeah.
It's really sad.
It's, it's very sad. The, the bad news about AC5, there's so much bad news about AC5. But the, the thing that is, it's driving me crazy is, and I think the Building Committee, if I can just speak, is recommending that the board approve this second set of work for AC5, which is a lot of money. Oh my gosh, where was I going with this? I just lost.
Well, this, this bite us over if and until we get in a new system.
That's what I, thank you, Matt. You read my mind sometimes. We, we sort of, we are in a position where if we don't do this work on AC5, this second set of repairs, we may be able to make it through the winter, but we won't be able to make it through the summer. So we can think of it as we will spend this money, we'll do this repair, which we're not thrilled about doing. But that will buy us some more time as we put, you know, as we, as we put together the larger plans that we've been working towards.
Yep. That sounds right.
So I'm going to change the agenda because I, I think it makes sense to consider the resolution at this time. What we'll do is I'll keep track of the changes in the sequence, but I'm going to bring your attention to Resolution Seventy-Six. If there are no other questions or comments through the Cecilia or Karen, which is the approval of the Clean Air Proposal and reads, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the Clean Air Proposal dated one seven twenty twenty-one pertaining to AC5, new compressor valves and four evaporator coils in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. And are there any questions or comments on the resolution? If not, entertain a motion and a second to vote on Resolution Seventy-Six.
So move.
We have a second. All those in favor of Resolution Seventy-Six, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Are there any abstentions or objections?
I'm staying.
We have one abstention. Otherwise, the motion carries.
Could I just say quickly, I didn't want to say this as a comment beforehand, but I wanted to agree with Amanda and others that I've always been impressed with Jim's willingness to give us options. And so when Steve had in, in effect told us in that Building and Grounds meeting that we should just maybe get rid of AC5, the well, and not keep repairing it. And Jim said, well, hopefully that will be in our future. But at present, we, as Karen was saying, reminding everyone that we couldn't make it through the summer without fixing the well. And so Jim's other point, which I thought was a very good one, which is that taking some of the stress off the wells with the new boiler is going to be very helpful in the long run. So perhaps these wells won't fail as quickly as they have been because some of the, the pressure or the use on them is alleviated. And I thought that was a very good point that he made. So we're trying to de-stress the geothermal wells a little bit, so anyway.
And Karen, you had mentioned in your notes that John Tortoso is getting training on the system. Who's our backup to John Tortoso?
We need to train a backup.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a good question, Matt.
Succession plan, Karen.
Yeah, I know Molly and I are sort of, we have to struggle through that.
Okay. And I've always been concerned about the computer hardware that's running the system. Do we need to speak to Jim Dolan again? Because he always separated it from all the other projects, he's, in the way he breaks them down.
Right. So we have spoken to Jim about a proposal for, about whether or not we should get a proposal for upgrading the BMI system, the Building Maintenance Interface, I think that stands for. And he did say that we, we could do that and we, we probably should at least get a proposal for that. I know that John Tortoso had gotten me a rough proposal, you know, just like an off-the-cuff proposal from Clean Air at one point, but we can revisit that. If we do get, here's, here's sort of the kicker with that one. We could, just like we did last time, we could always get a new system that overlays the old system. But that's not, I don't think that's what we want. If we want a fully new system and change out all the VAV boxes throughout the building, which would have to be done if we get a completely new BMI system, that's going to be a very large investment.
Listen to you with the VI, VM boxes and.
Do I know what any of these things are, Matt? Not really. But I know they have to be done.
I'm like, you know, though, Karen, so you're faking it till you make it, right?
I, I think we have to pay attention to it. I can't, I don't want to wait for the system to crash and then all the other equipment sits around waiting for that to be fixed.
Yeah.
And, and that's all I had. Modular spaces.
Did anybody on the Buildings and Grounds Committee find out why the water has sand and silt in it that's causing these wells to malfunction?
The water level is dropping.
It, yeah, it's due to the, the structure of the interiors of the wells themselves as they had been drilled back when they were drilled. There's, our site is not ideal for a geothermal site. Unfortunately, our site was constructed with a geothermal site. But the, the wells were not able to go down far enough because they kept collapsing. And the reason they kept collapsing is it's, it's very loose down there and there's a lot of sand and silt that comes up.
What it boils down to is before the, the construction began on the system, the engineers made a plan, they estimated how far they needed to go with the pipes to get to the water levels that they needed. So the temperatures were right in the winter and in the summer. And they drilled down and they, it wasn't what they expected. But they put it in and this is the result.
Got it.
Also has to do between being an open and a closed system too, right?
Yes, absolutely. Those sites that have closed systems where you're not using well water, you're simply circulating the same water through the system in and out. We had one of those up at Kent Library and it was really good. The open well systems, at least in our area, tend not to do so well because of.
Nobody knew, and nobody that did the designs for this knew that before they dug down and put them down there.
They couldn't know.
It was kind of an experimental, you know, design.
It's an experiment already.
What Jim has told us is that even, even the original design that they had planned didn't work. Because they couldn't, they couldn't do what they said they were going to do. So that was the whole problem. Well, I, I think.
Yeah, but anytime somebody does a project, they have to do environmental. Why, why didn't they find it out in that phase?
I can't answer that question. I don't know.
It's, it's my impression that they had an HVAC system designed. And then it was decided to retrofit it to become a green system. And I'm not sure that all of these things were really thought out as carefully as they should have been.
Well, it's a green system because it eats up a lot of cash.
There you go.
Yep, that's our joke. Molly, that's the takeaway for tonight. That's always. You know, and the reality is the quicker we can get off of this system, the better we will be.
Right.
Because we're just throwing, you know, it's, it's difficult, so.
Yeah.
It's a challenge. And we've got more time maintaining that system that continuously breaks down.
Yeah. And my ultimate fear is that we're going to get to the point in time where it just fails on us. Maybe that's too pessimistic of, of me, but it just seems like it's getting worse and worse as we go.
And it's aging. There's that too.
Well, it was from two thousand and seven, was it not? So it's now fourteen years.
Yep.
Yep. And it's deteriorated significantly, it seems.
Well, making plans to replace it definitely should be on the agenda for this year.
I couldn't agree with you more, Shanti. The quicker we can get off that system, the better we will be. All we need is a couple million, huh, Karen?
Yes, right now.
According to the phases, yeah.
Right now, we've been attacking it in phases. So, you know, we've finished, we've almost finished the boiler, the, the first boiler. We may need a second eventually. We, we knew that going in. And our next goal is to work on some of the cooling. But we did discuss at the Building Committee looking into bonding and we've discussed that in the past. We can get the whole thing taken care of. I've always been very conservative about that, not very thrilled about that idea, but I'm starting to come to the conclusion that that might be the best course of action.
I think we've got through this pandemic and economic challenge right now.
Well, we're going to, we're going to stay the course with the incremental right now. We have plans for moving forward with that.
And the building is warm enough these days?
So far, it has been good, yeah, so far.
And Molly, any updates on the modular spaces?
I was just going to say, we need to take those into account, by the way, Karen, in terms of HVAC designing.
Molly has a, Molly has something to say about that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, I, there were two questions. Well, there were three issues when you put in those modular spaces. Do you have adequate electric? Do you have adequate ventilation and do you have adequate sprinkler service? And we've already done the electric upgrade. We did that probably eighteen months ago. The sprinkler service came and examined the site and we have adequate sprinkler service. And Clean Air came and assessed the HVAC issues. There's some minor adjustments to ductwork and, you know, moving a vent fan over a few feet or popping in an extra one. And they're writing up a proposal and the expenses for us right now. So there shouldn't be any problems going forward. If you think about the way the spaces are now, obviously there's adequate sprinkler service because we have to have sprinkler service over it, whether it's a conference room, bookshelves, whatever. So that's all fine. There, one of the offices will be warmer than we would like because it has that same kind of greenhouse window that juts out of the building. But, you know, I was in an office like that, Diana's in an office like that, Ignira's in an office like that. There's, you know, there's no way we're going to make those spaces perfect. We'll make them comparable to what they are now. So I don't see any reason not to proceed unless Clean Air comes back with some wild and crazy expensive estimate. But they're, you know, they assured me it wasn't a problem. So I'm still looking at sort of April, May for when those walls would go in and we would have those spaces available for us. I.
Molly, we have to think about transition planning for Bob too.
John Tortoso.
John, rather, yeah.
John Tortoso, transition planning.
Oh, yes, yes. The something went, oh, the state contracts for security cameras and systems, they just did an updated list. And the people that are on the top of our who put in the good proposals for us are still on that list, but they've also added three or four companies that are in our area. I'd like to reach out to them. Based on what Shanti was saying at one of the meetings, I'd like to know what their status is as a minority or women-owned business. And if we can pick up some bids from companies that have, who can demonstrate that they're minority-owned businesses, we'll see if there's something out there and and building on some carpeting estimates and some other estimates that are out there. Again, those, the lists of state contracts were just updated. So there's some new companies on some of those lists. So it'd be nice to hit them up. See if they can give us a quick response. And the only other thing I can mention today is that some of our carpets are a whole lot cleaner than they were before. But not the main carpet. I don't want anybody to think that main carpet was cleaned. It's beyond cleaning. We've got bids to replace it. But the entire mezzanine, the second floor, teen room, conference room, and the entire children's room were all deep cleaned and they had never been cleaned since they were installed. Spot cleaned and vacuumed, but never deep cleaned. So it was pretty disgusting. Pardon?
In fourteen years.
In fourteen years. They actually had to run the cleaning service over them twice. The dirty water was so bad coming out the first time that they had to go in and do it, clean them again.
So we better get on a schedule, I guess. Might that be a good idea?
Yes, yes. They, they definitely need to be on a schedule. But I am impressed, one thing I have to say is that carpet was laid in two thousand and seven and in the lower traffic areas, it still looks great and the children's room still looks great.
Very good. And if there are no comments or questions, we can quickly go over the Foundation Committee. I'd like to bring to everyone's attention a volunteer on that committee who deserves a lot of credit and our thanks, Leslie Allen. Member of the community who's kind of taking the lead and has found a donor who has agreed to match this week's contributions for the piano fundraising. Am I right, Karen? Did I say it right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the, after this project, the Foundation is potentially considering raising funds to upgrade the theater, which requires painting and carpeting, and possibly supporting the purchase of the modular space. And if anybody's interested all in, that could be around seventy-five thousand dollars for those three projects, if I remember what you said, Karen.
For the modular spaces.
Okay.
Though I will say, we did receive pilot money a number of years ago that we said we could use for the modular spaces too, so we have lots of options. What we're trying to do is think of things with the Foundation that are fundraiseable so that we can use. Our other monies that we do have for other things that are not quite so glamorous. Maybe like HVAC.
Yes. Nobody wants AC five named after them. I do.
If there are no other questions on those topics, we can move on to the resolutions, the first.
By the way, Molly, we can think of some people to name.
First resolution up is seventy three, personnel changes. Are there any questions or comments on the listing of personnel changes? There are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept and a second for Resolution seventy three at this time. We have Amanda and Cecilia, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
And any objections or abstentions for Resolution seventy three? If being none, it passes unanimously.
John Hawkins, he's, this is like full retirement now, right? Because he retired and now he's came back. And now well retired, okay.
Yes.
Resolution seventy four, approval of board evaluation. It reads resolved that the Board of Trustees approves a library board's practical guide to board self evaluation. Association of Library Trustees, American Library Association, two thousand eight, and such board evaluation to be done during the first quarter of each calendar year. I'd entertain a motion to accept and a second at this time. Alice, I'll take that as a motion and Amanda, a second. All those in favor of Resolution seventy four, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions or objections?
Aye.
There being none, it passes. Resolution seventy five is straightforward, acceptance of donations. I'll entertain a motion to accept then a second for Resolution seventy five. Alice and Althea, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? There being none, it passes. Move on to Resolution seventy seven. This is the, this has to be, we did this.
Can I explain? I'm going to anyway. We had, you had approved a contract for Molly. Unfortunately, I neglected to have her floating holidays and personal days included in the contract, so I really apologize. I apologize to Molly and I apologize to you all for making you revisit this. This amends that.
Are there any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept and a second for Resolution seventy seven. We have Amanda and I think if you make eye contact with me, it'll count. So Lucinda, do you have the second? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye for Resolution seventy seven, aye, any abstentions or objections? There being none, it carries. The last resolution, I should have done this when we talked about it. Number seventy eight, approval of the twenty twenty audit. Resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the audit for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty. All those, entertain a motion to accept and a second. We have Shanti and Cecilia.
No, no, I have a, I have a question, comment, a comment.
Please go ahead.
All second.
Being as that they have to write a separate letter indicating that they did the financial statement as well as the audit. Why is it that the library doesn't have separate people doing the financial statement and the audit other than, you know, it's convenient?
I don't know, Karen.
We could. I can tell you how we did it in Cornwall. We had a volunteer treasurer. Who prepared the financial statements every month for the board and then, and then those got fed into the audit, but they were prepared independently. We have, to my knowledge, I don't know that we've ever had our treasurer prepare the financial statements. If we wanted to do that, I can certainly speak to him about it. It's my feeling that we may have to find somebody to pay that, to do that. It's a little bit more. Involved than approving the payments like he does for us, but that's entirely up to the board.
Shanti, it's a good question and it raises another question because we don't have an active treasurer. We have a treasurer in name. In name only, and we talked about. Perhaps finding a substitute in the past and we, we accepted the situation. I accepted the situation and I think I need to pick up that search again. And Karen, I'll be talking to you about it to get your input.
Sure.
But thank you, Shanti. I'm glad.
Yeah, it's just a question because when I, when he said that and when I read the, read that at the end of the letter, I was like, hmm, what's the reason? What's, I mean, what's the reason why we do it that way? So that's fine.
Okay.
And especially because he's saying, you know, that it's done that way so that. You don't get, you know, the the entity doesn't sue them.
Right.
You know, that's not a good reason to do something a certain way.
I will say that Jaime does review all of the check warrants for us, so he does have that role right now.
Okay, thanks.
Is he doing it virtually?
He is doing it virtually and then he asks for detail and I send him detail.
So all those in favor of Resolution seventy eight, approval of the twenty twenty audit, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? There being none, it carries. And we are up to the point of old business, there's nothing on the agenda because we've moved it up into action. And new business, I don't have anything. Does anyone else, Karen, Molly, anything of the new business?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Actually, not new business, but I just was, I meant to ask Michael if he was going to share what he showed us tonight. I know he said it was preliminary, but I thought it'd be very interesting to have those.
I can.
Slides that he showed.
I can ask him for that.
Yeah, if it's okay with him.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
I'm sure. He said it's rough, so he may want to.
Sure.
A little bit. So I'm asking him for handout. I did want to say one more thing in that regard as far as the Long Range Planning Committee goes. Or the Long Range Plan goes. I wanted to thank those of you who volunteered to be on the committee. Althea and Amanda and Cecilia and then Matt as ex officio. I think it's going to be a really, a really good committee. And I also like that the board is being involved as well, so it's not just the committee and it's not just the board. I think it's going to work really nicely that way.
How is he being received by the staff or have they not met him yet?
He's met with about, I want to say, seven or eight staff members so far. And everyone has received him very well to the point where people were texting me at strange hours saying, we love him. Who found him? So it's been good.
Yeah.
So this is seen then as a very positive step. I mean, because he's really an out of the box, long range planner.
Yeah.
For us, which is so exciting.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's been very, very well received and he has a lot of respect for the staff and the trustees who he's spoken with. It's, I think it's going to be a good partnership.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
So before we go into executive session, Jonathan, I'd like to offer you the opportunity to have any, if you have any questions or comments for us at this time?
Oh, it's been very informative and I appreciate listening and again, very simple, listening and learning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Have a, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You.
Very well. And we are now up to the point of executive session. Kathy, did you need to? Nothing. Thank you for joining us, Molly. Thank you very much.
Yep, saying good night. Thanks, everybody.
So Karen, do you have, and a second? And all those in favor of ending the meeting to go into exec, please indicate by saying aye. The motion carries. At nine oh three on my clock. And Karen, do you have to shut the recording? Motion to end the meeting at nine twenty. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Aye.